Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a special guest here this morning. We have a special guest here this morning. His name is Rich Craig, currently serving as the State Department of Pennsylvania American Legion Sergeant at Arms and a student for post 610 in Mayfield. He has served in the Navy for 30 years from 1983 to 2013 and retired as Chief Petty Officer E7. Currently lives in Clifford Township in Lackawanna County. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioners meeting.
Motion.
Second on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Joan Hoda-Wan, it's Scranton. The GED prep course, it's Resolution 250085. In my mind, this is a win-win. It's a wonderful initiative for the prison, costs the taxpayers no money. My only comment on it is, I've watched this initiative, so to speak, pop up three times. Apparently it was run by a gentleman several years ago. When he retired, it went away. Then we resurrected it, only to have it go away again under COVID. So now this is the third resurrection. My only comment is, let's not do this a fourth time. This is a great initiative for the county, and if only one inmate turns around, it's a success story. Let's see. Then there was the Riverfront Park Grant. I think it's Resolution 250082. I like it, but I noticed that the deadline was April 4th. Did we like get an extension to squeeze under the wire?
No, they submitted it, and then we're ratifying it after the fact.
Okay, so it's good to go.
So we're good, yeah.
That's great. And finally, Ordinance 298, which I guess is this comprehensive capital improvement project.
Correct.
I suspect Dave Bolzoni will come up to speak on this when you get to this part. And there are a couple of things. I support it. You know, roads and bridges are fundamental to the success of the county. They've been neglected for a long time. But I was reading through the legislative cover sheet, and several things came to my attention. Are there any drawbacks to doing this? He writes, debt levels will be in the higher range of acceptable parameters. The county should forego additional future debt unless supported by a defined revenue source. This is something we're going to have to not lose track of. When the budget process comes up later in the year, but not just for 2026. This will be for several years in the future. We need to watch whether or not we're going to introduce additional debt, because here he's saying we should avoid doing that. Also, when you look at the end of this, it says, why should the commissioners unanimously support this legislation? He writes, "A broad asset improvement initiative has not been undertaken by the county for years." Classical case of kicking the can down the road. Okay, let's not, you know, we don't want to spend those funds. Including the government center as an asset initiative is questionable. Now, I would like an explanation of what's being implied in that sentence. I was never comfortable with buying Globe Store. I thought that, you know, we were lowballing the cost of buying it and renovating it and sustaining it in down the road. So I would like some explanation of why it's questionable. Neglect has taken its toll on the many miles of roadway and bridges under county responsibility, and I understand that, and I agree. So when Dave comes up, I would ask him to talk about those items. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay. All right, we'll move into the proclamations. We have two proclamations this morning. The first one is a proclamation declaring April 6th through April 12th, 2025, to be National Library Week in Lackawanna County. I'd like to read this proclamation into the record, and then we're going to have our Lackawanna County Library System Executive Director Sandy Longo come up to say a few words. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources, while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas, libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas, the PA Forward Literacy is Power Initiative highlights how libraries encourage literacy in basic information, civic, and social health, and financial issues, which contributes in greater personal and community success. And whereas, libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas, libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning. And now therefore, we, Bill Gohin and Chris Chermatt, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim April 6th through April 12th, 2025, to be National Library Week in Lackawanna County. And I'd ask Sandy if you could step up. And before Sandy speaks, I just want to tell you that I have the pleasure of, we both do, working with Sandy really closely. And she's in our staff meetings every month. And I can tell you that I think we have one of the best executive directors in the state of Pennsylvania. We definitely have one of the best, if not the best, library system in the state of Pennsylvania, and that's because of her and the people that work with her. They do a wonderful job. So Sandy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, thank you for recognizing the work we do every day and declaring it National Library Week in Lackawanna County. Your support and recognition means so much to us. I am Sandy Longo, the Executive Director of Lackawanna County Library System, and I'm proud to represent all seven member libraries, two branches, and the forthcoming Bookmobile. With me here today are the many of the directors and/or their designees from our member libraries, as well as I believe I saw a board member. And a board member. So we do what we do because they do what we do. We do what we do because they do what they do, and we're just so fortunate. This year's National Library theme is Drawn to the Library. The why behind National Library Week is a celebration of libraries and their vital role in transforming lives, strengthening communities, promoting libraries' use and support, and highlighting the contributions of librarians and library workers. A few of our libraries are bookmarking the celebration throughout this week with special events and programs to draw your attention to the libraries and the events, programs, resources, and services that we have to offer, not only this week but every day. And I'll take a few minutes, just a few moments, to highlight a few. The Scranton Public Library showed their appreciation for their patrons with cupcakes and coloring. And Taylor Community Library hosted a fun and thought-provoking game of banned book bingo. And yet to come, at the Carbondale Public Library, you can draw a stained glass window during their 100 Years of Gatsby program, or draw attention to your mom at their Mother's Day photo booth. At the Nancy K. Holmes Branch Library of the Scranton Public Library, there's an intro to drawing for adults. And at the Children's Library, there's more drawing with their library staff for children. There's also a few statistics that I'd like to share with you. We just completed our 2024 annual reports to the Office of Commonwealth Libraries. In 2024, the Lackawanna County Library System's website had 63,257 visits. In 2024 collectively, the Lackawanna County Library System Member Libraries welcomed 443,565 visits to their physical libraries. In 2024 collectively, the Lackawanna County Library System Member Libraries hosted nearly 4,000 programs, 3,776 to be exact, with over 69,000 patrons of all ages attending those programs. In 2024 collectively, the Lackawanna County Library System Member Libraries had 29,665 electronic books, audiobooks, magazines, and databases available for downloading. And in 2024, patrons downloaded the aforementioned materials 86,234 times. So what's the significance of these numbers in a time where downloadable content is at an all-time high? These numbers validate libraries, the physical libraries, as group meeting places, community hubs, centers for socialization, learning, and recreation. I invite you to not only celebrate all that libraries have to offer, but also celebrate libraries fighting against senior isolation. Libraries as support systems for young families through a statewide designation called Family Place. Libraries central to offering educational and recreational opportunities for patrons from birth through seniors and so much more. And I'm just going to conclude with a special invitation to everyone that on Wednesday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM, the American Masters Lecture hosted by the Lackawanna County Library System will welcome Rick Steves, who is widely known for his European travels, his advocacy, his... He has a television show on WVAA. You may have seen it. And he will be here, and if you'd like tickets, just go to Ticketmaster.com to get yours. And we hope to see you there.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy. And it's free. That's right, Joan.
I'm sorry. I assumed that was understood.
And have you come up and anyone else who's here from the library so we could get a picture with the proclamation?
One step. Slide down. Kristin, will you, may I help you this?
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have a second proclamation here. This proclamation is declaring the month of April 2025 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. We have two speakers today from the Women's Resource Center, Mary Claire Mecca and Hilda Rodriguez, if you'd like to step up to the podium. And I'm going to read the proclamation into the record. Whereas sexual assault is a pervasive and intolerable violation of human rights that affect individuals of all genders, ages, races, and backgrounds, leaving lasting trauma on survivors, families, and communities. In the United States, every 68 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted, and one in six women and one in 33 men will experience an attempted or completed rape in their lifetime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is observed each April to raise public awareness about sexual violence, educate communities on prevention strategies, and support survivors in their healing journey. The theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Together We Act, United We Change, underscores the critical role that individuals, organizations, and communities play in preventing sexual violence and advocating for survivors. And whereas the Women's Resource Center and other advocacy organizations in Lackawanna County provide vital services to survivors of sexual violence, including crisis intervention, counseling, legal advocacy, and prevention education, helping to create a safer and more just society. And whereas, all residents of Lackawanna County are encouraged to support survivors by believing them, advocating for systemic changes to prevent sexual violence, and engaging in efforts to create a culture of consent and respect. And now therefore, we, Bill Gohin and Chris Chermatt, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. If you'd like to speak. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Good morning. I'm Mary Claire Mecca. I'm a counselor advocate with Women's Resource Center. Mackenzie Major and I are here to accept this proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month and to thank the county commissioners for your continued support of our program and for sexual assault survivors. We have a 24-hour hotline. We do hospital accompaniment for victims, and we also do court accompaniment, plus in addition to our counseling program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to come up, we'll take a picture with them. Okay, this is the first reading of Ordinance 25-0079.
Mr. Chairman, in ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, sets forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to provide funds for a certain project of the county which consists of or all of the following: the design, acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, and installation, furnishing, and equipping of improvements and/or additions to the county's facilities and properties, including, but not limited to, street paving, and improvements to bridge repairs and improvements, traffic control systems and equipment, flood mitigation projects, municipal buildings renovations and improvements, roof repairs and replacements, technology and information improvements, and equipment acquisition, energy-saving projects, and the acquisition of municipal equipment. Additional capital projects of the county, to the extent approved by the Board of Commissioners, the current refunding of the county's outstanding general obligation note series of 2023, funding capitalized interest of the bonds, and paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds. Whereas, the county has determined to accept the proposal of Raymond James &amp; Associates, Inc., as representative of itself and the NW Financial Group, LLC, for the purchase of the bonds, now therefore being enacted and ordained. Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania pursuant to this ordinance, the board hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to be designated generally as County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2025. The board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance which will be evidenced by the bonds shall be non-electoral of the county. The board shall and does hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the bonds. In accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance, each series of the bonds when issued will be a general obligation to the county. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dulmore, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the bond shall be paid on the proceeds derived from the issuance of the bonds. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and sale of the bonds of the financing of this project. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that along with a series of slideshows is our CFO, Dave Bolzoni, and then Roads and Bridges Director, Mr. Larry Lukasik, and our County Engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen, and also add that Brian Koselansky from Stevens &amp; Lee is here, in case there are any specific questions relative to the ordinance. But before we get into the slides, a couple of points I want to make. First of all, this project or projects had actually begun in October of 2022, which was the first month I was here. And the planning that went into it was really very significant. And what initiated this was, and I believe it was at the time, one of our bridges went down. There wasn't any funding available to improve it. We didn't have a plan for improving our roads and bridges, never mind any of our other capital assets. So given the importance based on numbers, number of bridges, miles of roads, this was something we actually started on in October of 2022. Relative to the ordinance, there are actually three components. So there's a refunding or a refinance of $11.99 million in interim or short-term notes that were issued to Fidelity Bank in December of 2023. This note funded Phase 1 of this capital projects initiative, which was principally roads and bridges in that regard. This note matures in June of 2025, hence the need to refinance it, and hence the need to move forward to refinance it, because it's going to take us several months in order to be able to get to that point. It also includes a rate modification of the $14.225 million note that was issued to Fidelity Bank in December of 2023 to fund the remaining projects in Phase 1. This note was issued for 20 years. The rate will be reduced from the current $5.3976 to $4.75, which approximates to some extent what we would receive in the bond market. And then the last piece of it is the issuance of a short-term note in the approximate amount of $17.5 million to fund Phase 2 of the capital projects initiative, consisting principally of the remaining roads and bridges projects. This note will mature in two years, and it will have to be refinanced at that time. And we'll talk more about some of these as we go through the slides. So we can begin with the first one. In December of 2023, the county issued two general obligation notes for a wide range of much-needed capital improvements. Those projects were divided into two components. Those that could be complemented by the use of the $5 registration fee and those that could not. Very important to consider the value of the $5 registration fee. That's going to provide us with funding that takes the momentum that we're getting from all of the projects that we're working on with this debt and be able to solve problems going forward. We bring in about $1 million a year through the registration fee. Right now, what we have is being dedicated to the repair and improvement of the GC Smith Road Bridge. But once that project is completed, those funds will be deployed for roads and bridges going forward. An $11.4 million short-term note was issued for two years, that's the one that's being refinanced, to fund roads and bridges projects and is complemented by the registration fee. And again, we're moving forward really on a number of fronts. The registration fee is taking care of the GC Smith Road Bridge. What we've borrowed is taking care of a number of other roads and bridges that we'll talk about. This note was issued for three years due to federal spend-down provisions for tax-exempt loan proceeds. We could have done all of this in 2023, but there are provisions that Brian can certainly expand upon if you'd like relative to the use of those proceeds and how long you actually have to spend those proceeds for tax-exempt borrowings. A $14.225 million note was issued for 20 years to fund a facility-wide energy savings project, prison roof replacement, reconstruction of the county-owned dam #5, and reconstruction of retaining walls. Okay, we can move on to Phase 1. Phase 1, using the $11.4 million note, was expected to fund about half of the projects deemed critical due to deteriorating conditions. I have five pages of projects, and Frank was gracious enough to list all of them out. Every single one of them has a poor condition rating. Every single one of them. That's important to note. Those projects included in Phase 1 were the Center Street Repaving Project, Stoffer Road, Phase 3, Montage Mountain Road, Glenmore Boulevard, Main Avenue in Blakely, the Archbald Retaining Wall, and Gordon Avenue in Carbondale. A lot of people may not recognize that these are our roads. So if you're driving on Main Avenue in Blakely, and I've been on that road within the last month, which is a disaster, you'd think, well, gee, how come Blakely Borough isn't paving it? Well, they're not paving it because it's not their road. It's our road. These projects have been completed or are expected to be completed within the three-year spend-down cycle. Okay, and the next, we have, there's an aerial view of the Gordon Avenue Drainage Project. And you could see the condition of the road in the slides on the right-hand side and the deterioration that's associated with it. Likewise, in the next slide, it's the Main Street Resurfacing Project in Blakely and Archbald Boroughs. And again, the condition of the roadway, and it is a pretty significant stretch of roadway. The next is the Montage Mountain Resurfacing Project and the miles of road that are associated with it. You can see that in red and in green. It's a very significant and costly project. The next slide is the Poplar Street Bridge Repair in Mayfield Borough. And a point I'd like to make is, these projects affect many of the municipalities in the county. And that's something that we might lose sight of. So a lot of our bridges are dispersed throughout the county. You have bridges as dispersed as in Benton Township and in Clifton Township, but it affects everybody that lives in the county to some extent, and that's important to note. Okay, we'll move on to Phase 1. And as I pointed out before, Phase 1, other projects that were included in Phase 1 funded by the $14.225 million note included prison roof replacement. That project has been bid out. It's going to be undertaken. It may even be starting. It was going to be undertaken in the spring. Retaining wall reconstruction. Some of the retaining walls have been completed. We still have others that have yet to be undertaken. A facility-wide energy savings project, which includes the Children's Library. A lot of the work is being done in this building. And I know that, you know, it was pointed out that there were some points that I made relative to the project. I can maybe graciously say that when the county invested in this building at the time, it probably could have provided more sufficient funding to complete it instead of capping the amount of improvements at the time. So just to give you an example, and this is only one example. As we were going through the energy savings project, we found a sprinkler system on the main floor, which was great. We had six sprinklers that were dispersed through the main floor, but they weren't connected to anything. And we found other situations that were similar to that. So it hasn't just been creating the energy improvements which will translate into savings and utility costs, but it's also been to clean up some repairs that probably should have been undertaken at the time the building was completed. Also on that list are courthouse improvements to the jury room and also to the public defender's office. I noted that prison work will begin this spring. The retaining wall projects I had talked about. The energy savings project is about 90% completed. There's a lot of work that's been done. There's a lot of work that's, that's been done in this building and all of the other facilities. For the most part, those projects are completed. We have some work that obviously, as you're coming in the front door, you can see, has yet to be completed. But the expected completion date is August of this year for this building, and that would be for the project in entirety. The courthouse project has yet to begin. So, if we go on to Phase Two. Phase Two will be undertaken similarly to Phase One. So, a short-term note will be issued to fund these projects. What's important to note is during that time, the note is outstanding. The county's going to continue to seek additional funding, whether it's grant funding or an injection of revenue from outside sources. We'll be looking at other funding sources to hopefully, to reduce the amount that gets refinanced in two years. Or, it provides the commissioners an option. If you're able to secure additional funding that could be plowed into projects that are associated with Phase Two, and you decide, okay, we still have a laundry list of projects that need to be completed. So, maybe what we'll do is just refinance the full principal amount of Phase Two and then take whatever money we get, move it into some of the other projects that are needed. But at least it provides the commissioners with an option, and I think that's important to note. At the maturity of this note, the county will refinance this note over probably a period of 20 to 25 years. The original funding amount was expanded due to the recent closures of four bridges that were not on the Phase Two project list. And I want to point that out because we started with a list of projects in 2023, and it expanded because of bridge closures. And I think that's important to note. We have 154 bridges. We've had four that closed that can't be used. I don't think that should be acceptable to anyone. Phase Two projects also include Ash Gap Road Bridge in Springbrook Township, Plank Road Bridge in Clifton Township, the Rush Brook Creek Bridge in German Borough, the Main Street Surfacing in Archbold, and I noted it's from Gil Martin Street to the Heinen-German Road intersection, the Lehigh Road Bridge in Covington Township, Keystone Road and Phillips Road Bridges in Clifton Township, the Earl Clark Road Bridge in Benton Township, the Pump House Road Bridge in Jefferson Township, and matching funds for the dam number five project. So, as I pointed out, these projects are, these bridges and roads are dispersed throughout the county. There are a lot of people that benefit or will benefit from the completion of this Phase Two, again, most projects on the Phase Two list are in the design and engineering stage and are expected to be completed within the three-year spending window. So, again, we're issuing tax-exempt debt. We have a spending requirement on that. It was a reason for really doing the two separate components, so we fully expect that those dollars would be spent on this note, which has yet to be issued within that three-year period that the Treasury allows us. The Plank Road Bridge, Keystone Road Bridge, Rush Brook Creek Bridge, and Earl Clark Road Bridge have been closed. Two of them are located in Clifton Township. So, I'm sure the, the people of Clifton Township and the Clifton Township supervisors would be pleased that the county's finally addressing that issue. Project funding support. And I thought it would be important to go through this because we're not lifting on our own. This isn't something we're undertaking just through the issuance of debt. The county received 2.5 million in grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the dam five reconstruction. The grant match, which is in the, which is the county share of the project and is in the, within the loan proceeds, is 1.382 million and is included in the Phase Two borrowing. The 2.2 million Blakely retaining wall project was supported by a $66,000 state grant. The 1.9 million Stoffer roadway resurfacing and drainage improvement project was supported by a 1.4 million Pennsylvania Department of Transportation grant. The Gordon Avenue Stormwater Improvement and Roadway Resurfacing Project in Carbondale is supported by a $1 million PennDOT contribution. The Plank Road Bridge Project in Clifton Township is supported by a 1.4 million PennDOT multimodal grant, which requires a county's match of 800,000. And I'll mention that whenever we receive grant funding, there is really is always a match required. So, we have to have funding in order to complete that project, even though we're getting grant funding typically from the state. The G.C. Smith Road Bridge Project in Elmhurst Township will be funded by $2 million in registration fee funds. We now have $2 million in the registration fee account, and this project is going to be matched by 2 million from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The project cost is approximately $5.5 million in total. So, total funding support for these projects amounts to $8.5 million. It's not insubstantial. On debt service. Within the county's 2025 budget, net of the $11.4 million funding, debt service is at, is at 22.327 million. Now, when added together, the $11.995 million refunding, and that includes accrued interest on the $11.4 million note, the 15.375 million in new money for the roads and bridges projects, that's Phase Two, the 1.689 million, which includes the match requirement for dam number five, that's also included in the funding for Phase Two, and funding for the G.C. Smith Road Bridge Project, debt service for 2026 is projected at 23.4 million. Debt service in 2026 represents an increase of just over 1 million from the 2025 level and will not result in a millage increase for debt service. The county's going to use balance in the debt service fund to offset the additional requirement for debt service in 2026. And we didn't want to look at an increase in millage for debt service in 2026 due to the onset of reassessment. So, how can we do that with what we have? We have it figured out. Because the county designated specific millage for debt service, millage levels will be based on the projected debt service requirement for that fiscal year. Based on projections provided by our financial advisor, debt service is not expected to breach the $24 million mark, and that's important as well. It's important because the goal for us is to look toward 2036. In 2036, the county will realize a reduction in debt service of $11.6 million. That is very significant, which using present values equates to a reduction in millage of eight mills. So, we've got to keep our eye on the process. And hence, as was brought up before and for other reasons, we don't really want to be in a position where we're issuing, issuing new debt of any significance whatsoever because our focus is on getting to 2036 where everybody's going to see a lot of relief. And what we did this year, which was kind of unique, was we had debt service millage separated out of the general fund, and it now goes directly to a trustee who's paying all of our debt service. So, we're not going to be in a position where if you have a reduction in debt service, especially in 2036 with the amount of some significance, where you could shift, not without the commissioner saying, by the way, we're going to have a reduction of debt service. We want to shift it to the general fund. It's not going to be quite that easy. And that was important as well for segregating debt service millage from the general fund so that when you get a reduction in debt service, your millage goes down. It's the way it should work. Projects. And this is important because we're really creating some momentum for the county, which wasn't there. I'm not saying this is a solution. It's not. We've got a lot of miles of road, and we have 154 bridges. But where we had no momentum, at least we have momentum now. Where we had no plan, at least we have a plan now. The projects include the Center Street Paving, Bald Mountain Road Bridge, Montage Mountain Paving Project, which is Phase One, the Poplar Street Bridge Rehab Project in Mayfield, Main Street Paving Project from Keystone Avenue in Peckville, Blakely Borough, and to Kennedy Drive in Archbold, the Gordon Avenue Storm Sewer and Drainage Improvement Project in Carbondale, the G.C. Smith Bridge Replacement Project in Elmhurst Township, the G.C. Smith Road Bridge Retaining Wall was improved in 2023, the Goers Hill Road Bridge Replacement Project in Archbold, Plank Road Bridge Number One Replacement Project in Clifton Township, the Ash Gap Road Bridge Replacement Project in Springbrook Township, Old Mill Road Bridge Replacement Project in Jefferson Township, the Rush Brook Creek Flood Protection Project in German Borough, Keystone Road Bridge Replacement Project in Clifton Township, the Lehigh Road Bridge Replacement Project in Covington Township, Main Street Paving Project in Archbold and German Boroughs, the Earl Clark Road Bridge Replacement Project in Benton Township, Springbrook Drive Bridge Replacement Project in Ransom Township, Phillips Road Bridge Rehab in Clifton Township, Plank Road Bridge Number Four Replacement Project in Clifton Township, Bridge Replacement Projects on Pump House Road in Jefferson Township and Stanton Road in Benton Township, the Stoffer Industrial Park Paving in Taylor, Taylor Borough, Montage Mountain Paving Project Phase Two, the Blakely Retaining Wall, and the Archbold Retaining Wall. And if we go on to the map, you could see by the red dots the dispersion of the county's roads and bridges and projects that we're looking at about, at about undertaking. And you can see that there's a lot of dispersion of these projects throughout the county. They wind up impacting a lot of people, and they wind up benefiting a lot of people as Okay, in conclusion. I don't know how many times I have to say it, but I'll say it again. The county maintains 154 bridges and about 35 miles of roadway. That is really significant. Many of the roads and bridges are classified in poor or critical condition. I have five pages of projects. Every one of them is listed in poor condition. This was remarked on before, but because of debt levels and the effect on the debt rating, the county really should focus on foregoing any publicly issued or bank-related general obligation debt that does not have a defined revenue source. So, as Ms. Hodawan had graciously pointed out for us, our debt levels are relatively high. Not to the point where I see a serious issue, but to a point where if we continue to issue debt, we're going to get slapped. So, we've already had two debt downgrades by S and P. I don't think we want to put ourselves, ourselves in another position where we can be impacted negatively. Was the reason we passed a debt management ordinance last year, and I believe the consideration of debt has to be taken very seriously going forward. Now, that doesn't mean we don't look at other funding sources. We've had discussions with the USDA. They offer an excellent 35-year funding program in terms of providing a loan which amortizes over 35 years. Your debt service on a project could become really minimal, and it's not really going to impact your debt rating. I'm not saying we don't look at possibilities like that, but as I pointed out before, you really want to hold the line on debt service. We're not going to breach that $24 million mark. Now, our debt service going out to 2036, if we hold the line, will start decreasing incrementally. So, within the next few years, we'll see a reduction to 22 million, down to 21 million, and then eventually with the goal of getting to that significant reduction in 2036. This funding plan is only a partial solution. The county must be diligent in continually maintaining its assets to manage costs effectively. We don't want to be in this position again. We're going to try and create a capital asset report that's going to list all of the county's capital assets. It's going to have a maintenance schedule, and we've got to be serious about really trying to fund those assets according to the maintenance schedule. I'll point out that, and as I noted before, we really began the planning for this in And these projects are really the result of a lot of planning and a lot of consideration. And obviously, it wasn't just myself. It was a joint effort by Roads and Bridges and Mr. Karsik, who just did an excellent job, one of the best people I've ever worked with. He's got a handle on everything he does. Frank Suma from GPI, the county engineer, who has provided a lot of information for us to support this project. The Office of Community and Economic Development, a lot of the grant funding was provided by applications that were underwritten by Sandy Upshinsky and with the support of the director, Kristin Magnata. The county's financial advisor, PFM, who had run numbers consistently for us to make this work, and Brian Koselansky from Stevens and Lee, who's been incredibly supportive, has been bond counsel for the county for quite a number of years. And I'll also add that we had a lot of input from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Chris Getz, who is a regional representative from the county, has been at the table with us going through these projects and going through the funding sources and how the registration fee might fit in to being able to provide us with an avenue forward on how we can use those dollars to continue to make improvements to the county. I'll close with, by just saying that if we've learned nothing from last year when the county was hemorrhaging revenue, this isn't a Disney film. It doesn't have a happy ending unless you really work very hard at it. That's what we're trying to do. We're really trying to create some momentum for the county going forward so that we can be proud of our assets, that people can use our roads and bridges. We're not at risk of having bridges closed all the time. This is really important, and I hope the commissioners consider it as such, and I'd like to thank everybody who's worked on it.
Thanks, Dave. We really appreciate all the work that you put into this, Mr. Lukasik, Mr. Sumar, county engineer, and all the other people that you cited. And I hope that people can appreciate the level of expertise that it takes to get something like this up off the ground, and not only up and off the ground, but continuing to move, to move the ball forward. I'm really proud this morning to support this project because it's responsible and forward-thinking, and it's a plan. And you need a plan for this type of investment in infrastructure in our communities that people rely on every single day. So, the plan, as Mr. Bolzoni pointed out, finally addresses roads and bridges throughout Lackawanna County, which are in critical Lackawanna County, which are in critical condition and long overdue for attention. These are not just numbers on a spreadsheet. These are the roads that our families drive on, they're the bridges that connect our neighborhoods, and they're the backbone of economic activity in our region. And as the old saying goes, you want to fix the roof while the sun is shining. So I think Mr. Bolzoni made this point. You know, I'm sure there are some people who have the idea that we can wait or we can push this off, but the longer we wait, the opportunity or the problem comes up that the costs go up for bridges and for everything else involved in this project. I understand that people are weary of governments borrowing money, especially right now because of the financial situation that we're in. But as Mr. Bolzoni pointed out, through careful financial planning and the use of this long-term capital financing, we can make these crucial investments without placing an additional burden on the taxpayers of Lackawanna County. So to me, this is about smart governance. It's about using the tools available to us today to prevent far more expensive problems tomorrow. We cannot afford to wait until a bridge collapses before we act. As Mr. Bolzoni pointed out, and as Mr. Lukasik and Mr. Suma have reminded us almost every time we meet, we do maintain 154 bridges and about 35 miles of roadway. So deferred maintenance or waiting leads to higher costs, safety risks, and loss opportunities. So by investing now, we're not only preserving our assets, we're building a stronger, safer, and more competitive Lackawanna County for future generations. So to me, this is about leadership, it's about accountability, and it's about commitment. And as you saw with the slideshow today, our residents can see their tax dollars put to work in visible, meaningful ways, and we are literally laying the foundation for a better Lackawanna County. Thank you.
So Dave, you know, that was a very detailed presentation, so I think that will help everyone understand where we are with this. And I know we did start this back in 2022. My hope is that we can get Larry Lukasik to stay on till we get all 154 bridges up in good shape, but I don't know if we'll all be around by then. But moving forward, this is definitely something that we have to continue and stay on top of. You did mention, you know, that we're going to look at other revenue sources, you know, and I know I've been working along with the congressman and Senator Flynn and Baker and Rosemary Brown and even Secretary Carroll. So I know we'll continue to have conversations with them. We're going to push the heat on them, and hopefully they'll come up with some funding that we can put towards these projects to help with our borrowing situation. And even with this building, even like Commissioner Notary Annie used to say, it's the gift that keeps on giving. Hopefully, at the end of this project, we will have most everything taken care of finally. So, but I appreciate all that you've done, Larry and Frank. So thanks for your assistance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the first reading. The second and final reading will be at our next commissioners' meeting, which is next Wednesday, correct, Mr. Directors?
Correct.
Next Wednesday. Okay. Okay, Resolution 25-0086.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 383671-383985, inclusive tolling $3,112,764.95. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, tolling $3,651,788.93. Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0085.
This is a warrant, the GED prep course. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the GED prep course to the Outreach Center for Community Resources, 431 North 7th Avenue, Scranton, for GED classes at the Lackawanna County Prison. Agreement to commence April 1, 2025, and expire December 31, 2025, and shall not exceed Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Here to speak upon that is the Warden of Lackawanna County Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In January, we put out an RFP for GED services, and we received an acceptable response from Outreach. It's important for me to point out that this will cost the county no money. We're going to be utilizing canteen account funds for this, and the benefits of it is that it gives the inmate population something to help them out with self-esteem issues, gives them something to do, and very beneficially, upon earning a GED, they increase their employability immensely. So those three things in and of themselves are very worthy goals. And again, our goal is to have a program inside the prison that is a GED prep course, but also to get the prison with the assistance of Outreach designated as an official test site center, so that individuals that are incarcerated that go through the GED prep course can then immediately take that test, which I think will have a dramatic effect on their passing ratios.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Warden?
And so, just to make it clear for everyone, that the funding from the canteen account is inmate funding, and it's used for the benefit of the inmates. So, you know, it does not come from our general fund.
That is correct.
Right. And so, also with Gary DiBilio's office, he monitors that very closely. He has some very good investments with that, so we get some very good returns. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep funding this for many, many years, you know, with the use of the canteen account funds.
Couldn't agree more, and I couldn't agree more with Jones' sentiments earlier about the hope and the desire to keep the GED program continuously running. I'm praying there's no more, you know, COVID-19 pandemics or anything.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, thank you, Warden, for all of your help with this. This is more than just an educational program. It's a critical investment in second chances, rehabilitation, and the long-term safety and well-being of our community. Providing incarcerated individuals with the opportunity to earn their GED gives them a pathway to a better future. I think everyone understands that it's hard, really, to go anywhere or to do anything without your GED. It's hard to get a job, it's hard to succeed once you get out of prison. So education, as Sandy Longo pointed out before, with our library system is one of the most powerful tools that we have on many different fronts, in this case, to reduce recidivism. So that when someone leaves our correctional system with their GED in hand, they're far more likely to find stable employment, contribute to the community, and avoid reoffending and ending up back in our prison. So, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0088.
Entering into an inmate services commissary agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award and enter into an inmate commissary services agreement with Keefe Commissary Network LLC for the Lackawanna County Prison. It's a three-year term to begin June 1, 2025. Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Mr. Chairman here, and once again, is the Warden, Mr. Tim Betty.
Thank you.
Good morning, Anne.
Good morning.
Just some highlights on this. Again, won't cost the county any money. This is actually, the commissary is what generates most of the funds that go into the canteen account. So it's an important contract with a vendor. The key points as to why Keefe has recommended is that they're keeping the current pricing in place, and they're going to be doing that for two years. They've also offered a, it sounds, it sounds to go against common sense, but it makes sense, that they're offering a lower commission rate for the county. That's helping to keep the prices in place as compared to other groups that had applied. And it's a very healthy account, as you mentioned with Mr. DiBilio and monitoring and placement of funds into the pligot accounts. It's a very healthy account, and we'd like to keep it as healthy as we can. And finally, the final keeper or the final part of this was that Keefe offered what I consider a better admission kit and a less expensive indigent kit. And if you can bear with me just one second, so I can kind of explain to the public what I mean by admission kit and indigent kit, is whenever a person comes into jail, it's just them. They need to be provided with things, and people don't come into jail with money to be able to purchase things off our commissary. So a couple items I just wanted to mention that are included in the admission kit are things like shave gel, body wash, toothpaste, toothbrush, a comb, a pen, paper, deodorant, wash cloths, a cup with a lid, things like that. That's what makes up the admission kit. The indigent kit is very similar to that. Sometimes, oftentimes, we have people in there that don't have any money, and they don't have family that can provide them with money. Well, we can still provide them with some basics. I don't have a copy of the indigent kit here to read off what's in it, but it's a lot like the admission kit. It's a little bit less than that, but it's going to give you the basics. You're still going to get toothpaste, the toothbrush, a comb, a deodorant, a wash cloth, things like that. And with somebody who's indigent, they have absolutely no money on their books and no money coming in the books, onto their books. Every two weeks, they get an indigent kit. So, with that.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions on this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0084.
Entering into engagement letter with, for the county pension audit, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an engagement letter to provide audit services for the Lackawanna County Retirement Pension Fund to Zelenkovsky Axlerott LLC for the years ending December 31 of 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027. Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, our existing pension auditor had withdrawn from the process, and it had to do with the cost of peer review, which I guess is fairly significant, especially for a small firm. So that prompted us to go out and seek expressions of interest from other firms. We wanted to try and do this as quickly as possible to keep the process synchronous, as you're aware and everybody's aware. You know, we've had issues with being timely with the completion of our audits, so we didn't want this to hold it up. So we went out and inquired with four firms. One firm was the previous pension auditor. They declined to submit a proposal. We had inquired with our previous auditor, who had indicated they were interested, didn't give us a proposal. And we also inquired with the firm that submitted a proposal for the county-wide audit. They didn't give us a proposal. Our existing auditor did. Obviously, that's in their best interest to make sure this is done. The costs are comparable to what we had paid the prior pension auditor, so this contract is $15,000 with $500 increments over the next four years. The contract under the prior auditor was $11,000. So, you know, again, you do have some inflationary costs built in. It's within range. I thought it was fairly reasonable, so I thought it'd be a good option for the commissioners to go with. Again, we want to try and keep this process as synchronous as possible.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay, thank you. We'll have at the public comment portion of the meeting, you can ask a question. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0082.
Authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the filing of Pennsylvania Conservation and Natural Resources grant application for the Riverfront Park Project Phase One. And whereas Lackawanna County Commissioners desire to undertake a Phase One initiative to develop the Riverfront Park project, and the applicant requests to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project, and I would be further resolved and hereby authorize the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to execute the grant agreement signature page on behalf of the applicant. Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm asking for the ratification of a $500,000 grant from Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Phase One of what is referred to as Riverfront Park. This is at no cost to the county because of the match that will be used for this project is UGI's remediation work on the property. Awards will be announced in fall of 2025, with work being able to begin in spring of 2026. And as was asked earlier today, that the application was submitted by the deadline.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0087.
Yes, these are appointments to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following reappointments to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Mr. Brian P. Manning of Kennedy Creek Road, North Avenue Township, as the farm representative. His term is to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2027. Ms. Mary Liz Donato of Bear Brook Acres Drive in Madison Township is the at-large representative. Her term is beginning immediately and expire December 31, 2027. Mr. John Roba of Lakeland Drive, Scott Township, is the farm director representative. His term is to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2026. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following appointment to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Mr. Douglas Palmer of Summit Lake Road, Clark Summit, is the elected official representative. His term is to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2025. Adopted and regularly meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 9, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Prior to the opportunity for the public to address the board, because there have been so many questions and concerns about the reassessment that's currently being conducted, which of course is natural, because the last time reassessment was conducted in Lackawanna County was 1968, I asked Pat Tobin, who is the Director of our Assessment Office, and Samantha Taylor from Tyler Technologies, the company who's conducting the reassessment, to come here today prior to public comment to give us an update on where we are. Also, just to kind of touch on how this all got started, and then if anyone, when you come up to the podium during your five minutes, if you have questions, they're here to answer them. Okay? So, Mr. Tobin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. My name is Patrick Tobin. I'm the head of the Lackawanna County Assessment Office. I'm the director. And Tyler's nearly three-year project is just about complete. Right now, they're doing informal reviews, which are being held up at the 911 Center in Jessup, okay? After which, they will turn the role over to us on June 1, and then the hard work really starts, because we're going to move into the formal appeals section. Appeals applications will be available on our website beginning July 1, and we're going to hold appeals from August 1 through September 31 of this year, at which point we'll have the complete reassessment role turned over to us, and we will certify it on November 15, 2025. And having done that, that will allow the municipalities to set their millage rate, and then everyone can be able to approximate what their taxes will be for 2026. As of Monday morning at 8:30, Tyler had scheduled 8,101 appointments, and 511 of those were canceled by property owners. The net total of booked appointments as of Monday morning was 7,589, or 7.06% of the total county parcel file. To date, they have concluded 32.44% of scheduled appointments, meeting with property owners to discuss their questions relative to 2,682 parcels. And our online scheduling system will continue to remain live through April 16, and I believe they'll be holding informals through the middle of May. I'm joined by Samantha Edwards of Tyler Technologies, who's worked closely with me for the last three years. We've met every Tuesday morning, and we've met at the end of every month to discuss a monthly update. Samantha, if you'd like to discuss the reassessment.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you for...
Thank you for inviting me here today as well, Commissioners. So, I'm glad I was given the opportunity to kind of address any questions that we may have been seeing or hearing about publicly. What I would like to state is that, as Pat had mentioned, we are conducting informal reviews right now, and we're meeting with all property owners throughout Lackawanna County. Those informal reviews will continue to go on through the middle of May. We have had quite a bit of outreach from the public, whether it be through the company that we had negotiated with so they could help us with taking on these appointments, through the website that is also available, or through our office here in the building here. We have been doing our best to make sure we handle all appointments. At this point in time, no appointments have been turned away. We want to do our best to make sure that any property owner throughout Lackawanna County who has any questions or concerns about their property or their tentative value letter that they received, they will in fact have an opportunity to speak with a Tyler representative so we can make sure we do our best to answer any questions that they may have. Just to reiterate as well, I know that we've had a couple of questions, and certainly one of the main things is how will this affect my taxes? As Pat had mentioned before, he had gone through the timeline of when, you know, those millage rates will be able to be adjusted. And the reason being is there's three pieces to the puzzle. First and foremost, we have, every taxing body has a budget, so we have to have the budget. Reassessments are revenue neutral, which means they cannot collect any more next year following a reassessment. So, we have the budget. The second piece to the puzzle is all values have to be certified. So, until that happens, which won't be able to happen until informals are completed, and then formal appeals have also been completed, and then that way we have our certified values. And then the last part would be the adjustment of the millage rates. Given that a reassessment has to be revenue neutral, when a value, total value of, when total values for the entire county are addressed, we have to look at the ratio of increase. Once we've established what the ratio of increase is, millage rates have to decrease in that same ratio to ensure revenue neutrality. Another thing to reiterate is that the tentative value letters have gone out to all property owners, and that's for all classes, so residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial, utility, and exempt. Both improved and vacant properties have all received these new tentative value letters. Informal reviews will continue through the middle of May, and then everything, all of our files, once they've been completed from Tyler, will be turned over to the county as of June first. We are set to complete by our deadline, which is June first, as we've been contracted to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. When you do come up to the podium, if you do have any questions, they'd be happy to answer them for you. Just please remain respectful and follow the rules of the meeting. And now is the opportunity for the public to address the board.
Bob Oluskranton. First off, Mr. Gohan, you couldn't attend the meeting here. You claimed you were sick, yet you could be out in the rain at Lackawanna County Courthouse with Cognetti, Pelosi. Do you have a medical excuse for missing work? I'm not here for your smiles. I'm here for a question.
Are you a doctor? First of all, that was four days later, and my entire house was sick, so I...
Okay. Do you have a medical excuse for it? Because we're your employer.
No, I'm not. Do you require one?
And if we're paying you to stay home, we want accountability. Understand one thing, and you better start understanding it. You work for us. We don't work for you. Okay, further on. As far as the reassessment goes, as of today, lawsuits are being filed regarding the reassessment, the tax increase, the thirty-two percent tax, and the money against you that you're using our taxpayer dollars for your own personal litigation against the Democrat Party to try and get you a little hush puppy to sit next to you there because you don't like the Democratic process, that as your employers in the county, you need to pay it back to us. This is your own personal litigation, and if you want to fund it and challenge the Democratic process that's been in place, then you need to support it on your own. Further, I think what you did to Mr. Conway was uncalled for. You made an embarrassment out of him for no purpose because you wanted a little lapdog sitting next to you, and he's a gentleman, and he's a smart kid, and he didn't deserve what you did to him. By bringing him in here, you should have submitted his application to the Democrat Party, and they're the ones that are making the choice. Choosing what's going on, the way you're doing the process, and you're using our money, that's your personal litigation. Welcome to it, but don't bring us into your party, and we're not going to pay for it. We want every damn dime back. Now, the second part of this, you turned around and there was a tax sale done to me. You were involved in it, and I've had people...
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. I've had people tell me you inquired...
Absolutely not.
You inquired to a Mr. Gohan, and I don't really give a damn.
Not true.
Because what I'm done, we filed another Chapter thirteen to prevent what you're trying to do in the county. The county's into me for over eighteen and a half million dollars from the last time your legal department here in the assessor's office broke the law and ignored the Chief Justice at a Commonwealth Court who told him, "Take a damn lien off me," and they didn't. They tried to put my property into a tax sale without adjudication from the court. I had to file a thirteen that cost me millions of dollars in my companies because I fund them. I'm asking you here now, supply the insurance from the county to my attorneys in Philadelphia. That's a formal request for it because we are going forward with the litigation, and it's going to cost the county a hell of a lot of money. I'm not going to sit back from all I've contributed to this county in a lifetime I've been here to be insulted and humiliated, especially by you. The other part of the lawsuit that's being filed, you, sir, ordered a deputy sheriff to remove me here. We have video and we have photographs where my shoulder was torn. You are getting the lawsuit for it. I've been under medical treatment. I've had treatment here in Florida. I have treatment here scheduled even again today. I've been through a lot of pain and suffering because of your arrogance, what you ordered him to do. I did nothing wrong. I was going to sit down. You wanted to exert your authority. Well, now you're going to pay me for it because of the pain and suffering you've caused me with your attitude. You got to remember one thing and one thing only. You're here to represent the people. We're not here to represent you. And I really don't like all the publicity we're getting because you don't like the system because somebody's going to sit in that seat that may not agree what you like. You dictated to us in the city of Scranton. That's why I put your head on the body of a skunk, where you skunked us there, and you skunking us here now. We're going to fight the assessment because let me explain something. Realtors are making all this up, and they put it in their thing. It's what you can sell it for. Well, if it was so darn good in the real estate market, they wouldn't have a portfolio. They wouldn't have a piece of real estate to sell because everybody would be selling and making money on it. They're using this assumption, and you know what assumption means, all of us. How much money it's costing us now to come and challenge them? It's our expense.
Thank you, Mr. Bolzoni.
And you'll fight it in a courtroom.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
We're bringing Pennsylvania back and Lackawanna County back, whether you like it or not.
That's great. Can't wait for it. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hello, everybody. My name is James Quinn. I'm from Carbondale. I'm Republican. I was wondering...
Sir, could you just move that microphone?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry. Usually, people tell me I have a big mouth. In a good way. So, I was, I helped run the Carbondale Trump headquarters, but I was born in Scranton. I love Scranton. I know a lot of people. There's a lot of strife going on right now. So, how about, in the interest of comedy with T and true bipartisanship, why don't you appoint an independent to that third seat? Sometimes they'll vote with you, sometimes they'll vote with Chris, and maybe some stuff can get done, and people will be happy about it. Suggestion.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Joan Hoda-Wan, it's Scranton. First of all, request that you put that slideshow on the county's website. It was excellent presentation. You probably saw in the paper a couple of days ago that Scranton lost its federal funding to buy the eighteen homes that were flooded out in September of ninety-three, which, they're obviously looking for other sources of funding, but it raises the issue. And you may not have an answer for this yet, but is the county at risk of losing any federal funding, just as Scranton lost that funding?
Yes, actually, so we've been talking to all of our directors through all of the thirty-plus departments here, just to keep tabs on that. It's, we don't know yet, so I don't have a definitive answer, but we are keeping track of it.
Should information come down, please share it as quickly as you can with the county. I don't know how you can right the financial ship if you're going to have this Sword of Damocles hanging over your head all the time. If the shoe's going to drop, I wish it would drop quickly so that you could react to it. What bothers me is that you have all this work that Mr. Bolzoni invested in, and PFM, and, you know, you're trying to chart a path, and some of it's painful, some of it's not. But not to know where you stand with the federal government, that bothers me. That bothers me. So, should you get information, please disclose it to the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, just real quick, feedback from the directors, the three that are concerned the most are the nine-one-one director and EMA, Arts and Culture, and Human Services.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sure. Sure.
Good morning. My name is David Maher from Clark Summit Borough. This is about reassessment. My experience with reassessment so far is that I got the original lot and house...
Data.
Data. Yeah, I corrected that. I sent it back in. Okay. Then I got the, a couple of weeks ago, I got the assessment, estimate. Okay, so I called, I said, "This is pretty high for my house." So, I called the number to make an appointment for the hearing, and talked to a nice lady and set that up, and I said, "Well, I want some information on the five houses, the five properties near me that were assessed or sold in the last, well, twenty-two to twenty-four." Oh, she said, "I don't have that information. You have to call Tyler." Okay, I called Tyler. Tyler says, "Well, we don't have that information." I said, "Well, I want to be informed when I go to this meeting, something, talk intelligently about these houses that were compared to my house." "Well, we don't have that information." "Well, when do I get that information?" "You get it at the hearing that you have." "Okay, so isn't that ass backwards? Shouldn't I have that information now?" "Well, we don't have that information. Call the county." "Well, I called your office..." "Yeah." "And they said, 'We don't have that information. Tyler has that information.'" "So, where do I get that information?" "My hearing's next week." "Yeah." You see, if I go in blind, I mean, that's no good for me. I want to have these five that, they're bigger square footage in the house, they have three bathrooms, I have two, whatever, I want to talk intelligent about, instead of just going in and just hearing, "Well, this is what we found."
So, there's a couple of things that I want to mention when it comes to these comparable sales that you're talking about. So, comparable sales are going to be used for residential properties. Typically, when we look at giving values to any properties, we have to take at least three approaches, or at least consider them. So, that would be cost, market, and then the income or the sales approach. So, if we're looking at your property and we have determined that the best approach would be market, that in that case, there would be comparables that we would be able to give to you at your informal review. If we use the cost approach, there would not be comparable sales because we didn't use that market approach. So, it could be that case with your property. I understand where you're coming from with wanting to see this information ahead of time. What we would be able to offer you ahead of time would be a data mailer. So, that would show you the information that we have on record for you prior to your informal review. I mean, we have the comparables available for the informal review. The reason we basically don't give them out is only because we don't really have availability. Not everyone in the office is given that availability. Only certain people are able to give that information out. So, a hearing officer...
Really, all I need is an address of where these properties were.
And you would be able to get that information at your informal review.
Right. Ass backwards. Really.
It's, I mean, that's our...
It'd be like you coming here today not prepared.
What else do you have questions for that I'm not prepared for? I'd be happy to answer anything.
I'm saying, you're prepared.
This is our process. That's our procedure.
But I'm not because I don't have that information.
We ask for property owners to bring in their own comparable properties. So, what do you feel is comparable to your property? What is it selling for on the open market? We have ours.
Right. I was told that, that I have to do my own homework by your office.
Well, you don't have to. We just say you, you know, it's a suggestion. If you don't agree with the value that's there, we want you to come to us. We want you to say, you know, these are the reasons why. At the end of the day, what we're looking for is accurate data, and I believe that as long as we have that accurate data, you will have an accurate value. If you do not agree with that value, this is why we're asking for you to bring us this information. You can bring us photos. It doesn't have to be comparable sales. If you believe, you know, my house, for whatever reason, you think it's over-assessed or overvalued. If there's a reason for it, show us the reason why. Maybe it's something inside of the home. Maybe it's something in the basement that we don't have access to, and the only way for us to find that out is from you, the property owner. The end of the day, you know your property better than anyone.
Right. But nobody came into my house.
We don't go into properties. We do everything from the exterior.
Right. Go by what everybody claims on the set.
With discretion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Ma'am?
Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. I want to commend the Commissioners for their decision on reassessment, and I say this because it's our system that we live with. When you are running a municipality, a county, a school district, you have to understand the system. The only way you can afford anything is by revenue. So, in nineteen sixty-eight was the last time assessments on properties were assessed and valued. So, for a county to be able to receive revenue to fix the hundred and fifty-four bridges and roadways with a nineteen sixty-eight assessment, like, how does that work in two thousand twenty-five? So, it's the system, folks, that we have to abide by. So, I commend the Commissioners for bringing Lackawanna County to two thousand twenty-five with the values of our properties. And I also commend them by hiring a organization such as Tyler to be thorough and very transparent, along with your staff that you have employed to implement and educate all of us. I have gone to quite a few informational meetings because my home is being reassessed, but I also sit in an opportunity, unfortunately, to raise taxes and millage. So, I understand too well the value and what we need to have a fair formula for a revenue stream. So, I commend you, and I also commend all of those meetings that you've done to help educate, and the two words that you have said over and over is revenue neutral. And all of us have to understand that. Revenue neutral. We're not here to get, put your value of your home so much higher that we're going to receive so much more revenue for your county or your school district. No, it's a fair, it's the system that we all have to operate under. So, I commend you for that. I also was not going to speak on the lawsuits going on with the open sea... No, it's a fair, it's the system that we all have to operate under. So I commend you for that. I also was not going to speak on the lawsuits going on with the open seat, but I was challenged by the first speaker. I think when you both, or all three of you, take an oath of office, and you've been elected by your community, you take an oath of office to stand up with the most integrity and honesty that you can abide by. When the opportunity to appoint a seat, not a special election, there should never be a political party that is the party that is representing the candidates that are looking to run for that open seat. That is corruption. So I commend the commissioners for fighting that, and trying to make a change, and understanding how you are going to get that seat, and hire someone for that seat. I commend you for that. My question is, why does a three-sitting-body commission have two solicitors? Why do we have two solicitors? Especially when, this specific case, they're competing against each other. They're both brilliant attorneys, but we have one commissioner who is looking to see fairness, transparency, and to keep politics out. And we have another commissioner who, I believe that you want the same thing, but you don't want the taxpayers to, I'm not quite sure why you're fighting. So your oath of office is integrity. Don't you think that having candidates send a letter of interest to a political party for an appointment is not corruption? So I commend you for your fight, and you do work for us. We elected you, and I trust you both. But I would really like to find out why our taxpayers are paying for two solicitors with three-county seat. So those are my comments, and again, I commend you both.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, Linda Bonikovich from Benton Township. I just have a question for the roads and the bridges and all that, and the registration money, sir. This is for that gentleman?
Mr. Bold's on, yes, sure.
Okay. Has the registration always, that was collected for the Commonwealth, gone to the roads and bridges?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know, since, like, I started being a notary, it was $45 for a car? Now it's $67 for a car? The weight, there's one to 25 classes of trucks. I don't even know how the truckers afford the registrations. So in 1980, a class 25, which is like 80,000 pounds, was $2,100. Now it's $2,764. So that's like a lot of money being pulled in from this registration. So where's all that money been from day one till now, that the bridges and the roads were not fixed at the time when they needed it? It's like, right now, it's all explosion, and it's all got to be fixed now. Like, why wasn't the money used at that point? If I have a hole in my roof, I'm going to fix it, like, that day? I'm not going to wait 10 years down the road and have a house fall down?
If I may, ma'am, the $5 fee has only been implemented over the last three years for Lackawanna County.
Well, I'm talking about the increase in the fees of registrations for all the vehicles.
And that goes to the state, you're in the wrong body, you should address that with your state legislatures.
Well, you said that you use that money for roads and bridges.
The registration fee funding that we collect, you're referring to a measurable increase, those dollars go to the state.
So you don't use any of that funds?
No, we collect $5, that's it.
So the county fee, $5, is only for you? That's it? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning. Suzanne Green, Lackawanna County, Benton Township. I wanted to say that I, I've already worked with Tyler Technology just a little bit. I had two informal hearings already, for two properties that I own. They actually went very smoothly, but as other people have said, there is no transparency. So I was not able to get any of the comps prior to those meetings. I came up, and I did my own research, and got comps of my own, and provided those to Tyler Technology. Turns out that there were significant inaccuracies in both of the properties that I own. I'll share with the group, that one of them actually showed that there was additional dwelling, and other buildings on my property that don't exist, and the other was a condition issue. So neither property had been visited, only aerials existed of those. So they did not, they did not go to every single property, because two properties I own were not visited. Another thing I wanted to just talk about is the average ratio. We talked about what is the average ratio for the increase. I'm positive that it is an accounting aspect that people in this room can do, and probably have done, and do know what the average ratio is that has occurred here in Lackawanna County. Average ratio means that what your old valuation was, and what your new valuation is. So I went ahead and did a sampling of my own. I sampled average homes in Troop. The 2024 assessed value averaged $4,100. The new assessed value averaged $158,000. That's an increase of 3,850%. In ratio terms, that would be 38 and 1/2. An increase that size, if we compared it to, let's just say, an industrial property that is in Troop and Dunmore, which has a combined 18 parcels, which Mr. Tobin and I have already talked about, has a, right now, an assessed value of 2024 of $1.2 million. If we put that same ratio towards that industrial property, that property would be assessed now at $4,620,000. I'm saying this so that you can put this in perspective. We're saying a residential average increase, now we've applied it to an industrial. Here's the issue: We don't have transparency, so we cannot confirm fairness or equitable. We do not have the tools provided by our county. And I'm looking at the two of you, because I know you have the ability to provide that for our public. And I think that you should get together and talk about it. They have those. I'm sure you already know that they have all these details. If I have them, they have them. I don't even have a margin of tininess. I just did a small sampling. If I could do that in a couple of days, I'm 100% positive, they've already done it, and if they haven't provided those details to you, they should immediately. You should demand that. That's your job, to look at that and confirm that we are fairly and equitably taxed, and not giving some deals to someone else. Because the dollars those folks are saving is the extra dollars that these folks are paying. And when the public finds that out, because they are, they are not happy, because it's not fair. So Schoolkill County, and I only have a few more seconds, but Schoolkill County is at the same part of their process right now. They're sending out the old valuation, the old tax amount, the new valuation, and guess what? The estimated new tax amount. How are they doing that? Because they know the average ratio. It's not rocket science here, it's simplistic accounting. We know what the revenue is, because as we've said, it's revenue neutral. Thank you, ma'am, for saying that, too.
Thank you.
And you may call me anytime, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Ma'am?
My question is about the millage. I've asked this at one of the meetings, and did not get a very satisfactory answer, except that it's a new system, they're working on it. My question is, last year, the millage was .063600. This year, on our tax, new tax bills, it is 85.66000. On your county website, it's .08566. It looks as though if this new system has moved the decimal point. And my question is, how were we taxed? Were we taxed on the 85.66, or what your county website states? And if it were the higher one that's on the tax bill, why are we paying higher, why would we pay higher taxes? I understand we had the 33% increase. That's not what I'm talking about. So I would like to know, why is the difference? And the other question would be to Mr. Tobin and Tyler. It has been stated about fair market value or cost. So how were we really reassessed? Is it fair market value? And if so, anybody, any one of us can look on Zillow, Home.com, all of those other ones, to see what the fair market value would be.
So with appraisals, we have to look at, we have to at least look at three approaches to value for every property. So whether, if your property was in fact valued at market, we would have those comparable properties available in formal reviews. Whether, no matter how your property was looked at, every property owner is, you know, they can bring forward comparable properties if they have those available as well. We will look at every form of documentation that's submitted, and then take further review. We're going to pass it on to senior appraisers within our staff, to look at the property and say, you know, maybe an adjustment does need to be made, or maybe it was a condition that needs to be corrected. Like I said before to the gentlemen, as long as we have accurate data, I believe that your value is going to be correct. The way that our system is set up, and the sales that we have looked at during the 30-month period between January 1 of 2022, June 30 of 2024, we do, we will have accurate values as long as the data is accurate.
All right.
So however the approach was taken, you're always giving, you can always bring to us comparable properties. We may not have them if that was not the approach we took. If we looked at cost, it would go off of reports that have been taken throughout the state of Pennsylvania, like market reports that we have seen based on cost materials and stuff like that. That's also data that we take in. So what type of home is built, the structure, you know, we're looking at, you know, what signing type it is, how many story heights there are, square foot living area, that's the type of things that we look at when it comes, especially to cost, with, based on what's the market, and how much those materials cost today.
Well, I have two vacant lots. They are each assessed right now at 500. One, according to your information that was sent back to me, one is over 26,000 some odd dollars, I don't have the figure right here. The other one is over 27,000 some odd dollars. How can a property be increased, a vacant lot be increased that much? That seems very, very high. I do have a meeting that we will be, I will be addressing this, you know, at the informal meeting.
Okay. So when we look at vacant lots specifically, we're looking at, are they buildable sites? What's the topography? So is it a level, is it a level lot? What utilities are available to it? Are there public utilities there? Has, even if it is a vacant lot, hasn't been improved at all? Like, is there paving? Those are things that we're looking for. And then the location. So where is the property? Are there, you know, is it in a town? Is it outside of an area? Is it waterfront? Is it riverfront? Is it wetlands? Those are things that we look at when we consider what a value should be for a vacant lot.
And ma'am, if you can leave your information with Mr. Jeffers, your phone number, I don't know the answer to the question on the millage, I'd have to look at your documentation, but if you want to leave your number, we can get that question answered for you. Okay?
And I understand that the millage for next year won't be set until later on in this year.
Correct.
So, you know, we can't figure out the taxes, you know, until after that.
Right.
You know, but I know Mr. Tobin has stated that it should lower, be lower?
Overall, not individually, but, Pat, go ahead.
Okay, but I would like to, would like to have an answer to the millage, because...
Sure.
It seems like it's getting very confusing...
Right.
...when you see different numbers such as that.
All right, thank you.
I think I have an answer for you, ma'am. You said .0856. That's 85.6 mils. It's, there are just two separate ways to express mils. See, the Single Tax Office this year installed new software, and the new software put 85.6, but in a mathematical form to express that, it's .0856. They're the same number, just two ways of expressing it. The numbers are the same, it's just two ways to express it.
Confusing.
Well, it just seems a little bit, you know, when you're looking at the two different... So that's why, you know, that is why it's very confusing when you're looking at two different areas here. On the county, it's one way, but on the bill, it's a totally different way. So I'm sure, if you look at your taxes, you will see what I'm speaking about.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave you information?
Yeah, if you could, yeah.
To?
Just leave it right to Mr. Jeffers there. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir? Sure.
This is about the third month I've been coming here asking the same question. I want to know your progress on this. I keep on putting these taxes and everything on the taxpayers, which is an easy thing to do. You sit back and say, "The taxpayers will take the burden." Whether they can afford it, they can't afford it, they could lose their houses, whatever. I've been asking for the nonprofits in this city, a list of who they are, what they contribute, and what they should contribute. My main concern is the University of Scranton, who's a cash cow, who has tons of money. Did any of you two gentlemen approach University of Scranton, or any of the nonprofits, and ask them for more money? That we're in dire straits. Did any of you do it? Bill, did you do it?
No. And Mr. Tobin, do you have a list of all the nonprofits? Or the city would have that information, I'm assuming?
I do. I have the information of all the nonprofits, both in the city of Scranton and in Lackawanna County.
Yes, I'd like to copy of that, if you would give it to me, Pat.
Okay.
I want a copy of that. Now, my question is, are you guys afraid? Chris, are you afraid to go to these nonprofits and ask them for more money?
No.
Why aren't yous doing it?
Well, maybe we will.
We will. Yeah, but...
You're...
When?
You're talking about a pilot, which is what the city does, right? So you're talking about a payment in lieu of taxes.
Exactly.
Right. And I think I said this to you the last time, and I know what you're getting at. If everybody, every nonprofit contributed X amount of dollars...
Exactly.
Right. But that still doesn't get you, it still doesn't change what happened last year. It still doesn't change the tax increase, it still doesn't change the $37 million structural deficit, it doesn't change $19 million in unpaid bills, it doesn't really... deficit. It doesn't change $19 million in unpaid bills. It doesn't really move the needle as much as you probably think it would.
Any about a money is better than nothing. What if they gave you a couple of million dollars? What are they giving you now?
Yeah. It's not going to happen.
There's a lot of nonprofits. Do you have an idea how many number of nonprofits there are in the county? And is there like 100, 200?
I, I don't want to guess, but it, it's a considerable number.
Well, how about these universities that are making all this money? Why aren't they contributing to our tax base and helping us out in some way, pay some kind of bills? I don't understand it. How some people can get away with it and put all the tax burden on the taxpayers who can't afford it. Some people could lose their homes because of this. I hear it every day on the street. People come to me and say, go to the meetings and tell them, we cannot afford these tax increases. You guys understand that. They can't afford it. What can be done? You just can't keep saying, pay the bill. You have to do something. You guys had a chance, Chris wanted to talk about it when Matt McGloin was here. Unfortunately, he left. He bailed. He did the right thing by getting out of this mess. But you could have sat down, talked about it, went over different issues on how we could get the budget down. What could have been done?
We did that.
They keep saying, nothing could have been done. Mr. Belzoni said, we went through everything. I don't buy it. I just don't buy what he's saying. If Chris said there's ways to get it down, I'd like to hear them. You should talk to him and maybe we can reduce spending. Like in our federal government, they're spending money like drunken sailors. Musk went in and found all the fraud. How much fraud could there be in Lackawanna County? How do you know what it is? There's a lot of wasteful spending. I'm not blaming it on you guys right now. It's the past administrations. These roads, bridges, and whatever, they weren't to borrow deplorable condition when Notarian and Dominic was here. All of a sudden, we're going to address them. Why weren't they addressed before? Get the money from the state. Did you ever go down to Shapiro? I asked you to go to see Shapiro if he can give you any money. Did you guys go down and talk to him at all? Tell him we're in dire straits for money? Did you ever go down and talk to him and say, hey, listen, what can you do to help us? I mean, you got to do something. At least try. We can't keep on putting it on the taxpayers all the time. I'm, I'm sick and tired of it. I have two properties. And the thing on the reassessment is, the house on the outside could be a barn, but on the inside, you could have gold toilets. How do they know you don't have $100,000 equity in the inside and the outside looks like a barn? You're assessing it from the outside. You never went inside and checked anything? That's not right either. How come that wasn't done?
Okay. Thank you.
We don't go inside anyone's homes.
Okay.
What was that?
We don't go inside anyone's homes. It's for the safety of us. It's for the safety of the property owner.
I know, but how do you determine the value of a property when the outside could be deplorable condition? You're assessing it at this, and inside is beautiful.
Thank you. Mr. Totino, your time is up, okay?
Well, I was asking her a question.
And she'll respond, but your time is up. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, there is someone else.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Leiner from Benton Township. Taylor Technologies, I have contacted you, had my informal meeting with you. I got zero of my answers, like questions answered. So I have a property, when we purchased the property out in Benton Township, our taxes were relatively low. My reassessment is now saying, proposing at the current millage, that I will be subject to over $20,000 in taxes at the current millage rate. Our property, I since, since purchasing it about three years ago, we have formed a farm. So we have a small farm. We ag farm on our property. I asked specifically if there was different millage rates according to ag farms to Taylor Technologies. They did not answer me. They kept asking me if I was a ag or a commercial property, which to my assumption is rated higher than a residential property. They were not able to give me any information whatsoever. They just told me that my rate was going to go up substantially and that they wanted to know more information about my property. They wanted to ask me more questions and then deflected every question I had for them. So is there a different rate for agricultural? I'm a USDA farm. I'm, I'm registered as a farm. We crop our property. So you're still going to hold me at the same millage rate?
No, ma'am. The millage rates will be adjusted after the reassessment. They have to.
Okay.
We can't collect any more revenue after the reassessment than we did before the reassessment. The millage rates will come down.
Okay.
What they're going to be exactly, we don't know yet because we haven't finalized the tax roll. That'll happen in November. Then, then the new millage rates will be released.
Okay. So is there, because according to my current tax document, since there was no, no accounting whatsoever, since we purchased the property, you never have updated whatsoever saying that we live on one acre and we crop 19 acres. So how is that going to be figured out? Because they couldn't even answer me that they, like, they said, oh, send me the document. But they gave me a timeframe that I could talk on the phone with them. And I provided them my paperwork. He said he would put it into his group chat at Taylor Technologies. No one answered. No one has answered my question.
So I just want to reiterate, so your question was if there's going to be a separate millage rate.
How are, yeah, how are they taxed? Like, how is this breaking down?
So if commercials taxed at a higher rate, there
residential
That's not, okay. So I want to clarify this for you. So it says on the tentative value letter, first of all, do not take your new tentative value and multiply it by the current millage rate. It will be highly inaccurate.
Correct.
Like that, like Pat had mentioned, the millage rates have to be adjusted. And to answer your other question, there is not going to be a separate millage rate just for certain classes of property. So when all of the values have been certified, that'll happen November, by November 15th, all the values will be certified. Then you have your three taxing bodies, your county, your municipality, and then your school districts. They are then going to set what the millage rates are going to be. Now, the county sets one millage rate for everyone within the county. Same for the taxing bodies. Each individual taxing body has one millage rate. You take that new millage rate and you multiply it by the new value of your property, whichever ones they are. And that's who you come up with what your new tax amount will be. So it's not going to be a different millage rate depending on the class. It's just, I mean, what these values are representing is, once they're all said and done, what your portion of that, that tax burden will be for each of your properties.
Okay.
So I want to reiterate with everyone, a reassessment is not, you know, like I said, it's revenue neutral. It's not to increase taxes. It's to redistribute who pays what portion.
Right. And I understand, I understand how that all works. I had another question. Sorry there. What was, I slipped my mind. I'm sorry. It's okay.
I'm sorry. We also have a clean and green program that's run through the state of Pennsylvania that you may want to apply.
I was going to, yeah, that was another thing.
Yeah, because you have to have at least 10 contiguous acres. And it sounds like you have 20.
Yeah.
So you would most likely qualify for the program.
And is there any agricultural cabbages to it that I'm not able to do anything on the land when it is clean and green?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
But if you get into the program, keep in mind, if you ever want to back out of
You can't get out of it, or you have to pay retro.
You can, but you would have to pay what's called a rollback tax on what you saved over those years. I think you'd be a perfect candidate for the clean and green program.
I think that I'm assessed extremely high for our property. We have power lines running through our property. So you assessed me at top dime, but the reality is, most people wouldn't even want to live on that property because of the power lines that they have to look at. So.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
And ma'am, if you have any additional questions, if you want to stay after the meeting, I'm sure they can
Okay.
add anything additional.
I appreciate that.
Okay, and they'll, they'll help you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give you my name and email at that point.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
My name is Joanne. I'm a resident of Lackawanna County. I'm also a small business owner here in Scranton. I'm here today to really talk to the general public who may see this. And I want them to know that we're being slammed with 33% tax increase, and it's hitting your bank accounts hard. Hundreds more a year. Many of you are seniors on fixed incomes, young families saving for college, small business owners scraping by, and you're feeling it. Commissioner Chirmack fought for you with a smarter plan, just a 6.3 increase slashing 10 million in wasteful spending. But Commissioner Gahan and Commissioner McGloin said, no, choosing their bloated budget over your family's budget, and you deserve better. We're pushing for an independent audit to dig into where your money's going because this deficit didn't just appear. You shouldn't be stuck bailing out years of bad decisions and choices. Your home and skyrocketing assessments, homeowners, listen up. The county's reassessing every property for the first time since 1968, and new values are hitting, and 2026 could jack up your taxes even more. Whether you're in Scranton, Carbondale, or out of the townships, your home's values might get inflated, sticking you with a bill you can't afford. We heard your fears. Some of you could face foreclosure if this goes wrong. That's why we're demanding a cap on how much your assessment can jump and a simple, fair appeals process starting this spring. You shouldn't lose sleep over bureaucrats guessing what your house is worth. Show up, speak out, and tell the commissioners to put you first, not their revenue goals, and we'll back you every step. Your roads and misspent infrastructure dollars, you're dodging potholes and praying your car makes it over the creaky bridges, but the Democrats are spending your tax dollars on fancy trails and safe streets projects instead of fixing what's broken. Families from Scranton to North Pocono to Clark Summit need safe roads to work, to school, not bike paths we can't afford right now. Your hard-earned money should go to essentials. Pave the streets, repair the bridges, keep your commute safe. We're calling for a full breakdown of every infrastructure dollar spent, so you know it's not being wasted on pet projects. The commissioners need to stop dreaming big and start fixing what matters to you because you're the ones who are paying for it. Your air and the Keystone landfill, if you live near the Keystone landfill, you know the stench, the worry. Will your kids' health and your home value take a hit? Democrats keep dodging, but we're with you. And groups like Friends of Lackawanna say no to the landfill's expansion past 2038. Keystone's already racked up odors, fines in 2024, and a court deciding on their Phase Three plan. You don't want more trucks, more smells, more years of this. We're demanding the commissioners fight for clean air, not just to shrug it off and talk about jobs. Keystone's already racked up odors and fines in 2024. The court deciding on their Phase Three plan. You don't want more trucks, more smells, more years. We're demanding the commissioners fight for clean air, not just to shrug it off and talk about jobs. Your neighborhood isn't a dumping ground. Stand with us, your equality of life. Come to meetings, raise your voice, and let's shut this down together. Your voice and bipartisan leadership, you voted for a mix of commissioners, two Democrats, one Republican, to balance things out. But Commissioner Gahan and Commissioner McGloin ignored Commissioners Chirmack's ideas and half the county's views, especially if you're from rural areas and lean Republican. That's not fair to you. Commissioners Chirmack's pushing for your interest, lower taxes, practical spending, but the majority shuts them down. We're demanding they give a real seat at the table so your voice, whether from Dalton or Dunmore, isn't drowned out by Scranton's democratic machine. You deserve leaders who listen to everyone. Tell the commissioners to work together, not bulldoze over you and your neighborhoods. Your kids and the Office of Children and Youth are next. Parents, you trust the county to protect your kids in tough situations, but the Office of Children and Youth let the families down for years. Case backlogs, not enough staff, and state downgrade in 2023, all under Democratic watch. Now they're bragging about fixed license in 2024 like it erases the past. Your kids' safety shouldn't be a talking point. It's a promise. We're demanding a public report on what went wrong and the real reforms to make sure no child slipped through the cracks again. If you've got concerns or stories, share them. We'll push for answers because your family deserves an agency you could trust. And let's talk about trust and real transparency. You're fed up and we get it. Where's the proof? You deserve to see every penny of your taxes laid bare, not hidden in vague budgets with millions of miscellaneous costs. We're fighting for live stream budgets, talks, websites showing expense, and Citizens Board to keep the county honest.
Ma'am, your time is up.
When you ask questions at the meetings, you should get straight answers, not brushed off. You're not just taxpayers, you're the heart of the land of Lackawanna County.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Come to the meetings!
There you go. Revolution. Thank you. That's great. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Oh, Laurine, come on up.
Hi, commissioners. I am really sorry you're going through all this with Commissioner McGloin. Wish it wasn't that way. But I appreciate some of the reporting on it. So thank you to the Scranton Times as well, which is odd coming from me again. Seems to be an upside-down world these days. I don't, I don't know. I do not agree with the tax increase at all. I'm still looking for answers from why we couldn't find $19 million, which maybe Commissioner Gahan, you can't answer that because you weren't here. I still haven't heard that from Commissioner Chirmack, so I don't know where the money went. I'm still wondering where the money went. I really would like an answer because I was the commissioner before that. So I know we weren't short $19 million when I left here. So we had a $27 million surplus. I, I don't get it. I looked at the numbers 15 million times, still looking for the answers. Why did we buy a medical building if we had, couldn't even pay our bills? Who decided what bills weren't to be paid? I went through all of our, our checks for the past, I don't know, five years, and everything was voted on. You guys, every two weeks, you vote on what you're going to pay. And I didn't hear any of the commissioners say to Mr. DeBilio or to anybody in our finance department, do not pay these bills. So why weren't they paid? How, how did that happen? Doesn't make any sense to me. And, you know, I, I know we, life goes on, but 33% tax increases are horrendous. We had a 50% increase since 2020. 50%. 11.3% from Chris Chirmack and Jerry Notariani voted on that, then 6% that Notariani and Dominic voted on, then 33% that you guys voted on. There's other ways to do it. I mean, I was here. I've, I've seen the numbers. Maybe people don't like the job I did, but I do. I think I did a great job. And I think we had a plan because we are in deficit budgets in the county. It's, it's very difficult to maintain our budgeting and not do a tax increase, but it can be done. I have tons and tons of questions. Every week I go through this. I, I don't even work here anymore and get paid for any of this, but it's so concerning to me that I just continue to try and look for answers. Mr. Tobin, at the meetings for reassessment, you said that you're in favor of doing these reassessments every couple of years. Is that still what we're planning on doing with these reassessments? Because if that's the case, then, you know, all of our unrealized gains are never going to be unrealized gains. They're going to be taxed. It's like taxing our retirement plan. People buy a house so that they can have a nest egg when they're retired. That's the whole point of it. Reassessment is not the answer to any of your problems. And the people of Pennsylvania need to realize that the state must come up with a different way to fund our governments. This is not working. I disagree with the reassessment. We voted. I put it on the ballot. Chuck Volpe and Keith Ekel voted me down with the judges, saying that our vote didn't count, 60-40 for a no vote on reassessment. But yet here we are because people didn't agree. They want the taxes. I'd still like to know where the 19 million went. And also, I saw that in our millage changes, arts and culture in the library have increased by .25. What deficit did they have that they needed an increase in taxes? I don't think they were hurting for money because I look at their budget all the time, too. I don't agree with that. When are we selling the medical building? I know that, thank you for getting rid of that, Commissioner Gahan, because we couldn't afford it to begin with. But what timeframe are we looking at when we can get rid of that and the expenditure is there? I'd appreciate to know that answer. And as far as our old, like this building, I want the people to understand, they complain about this building, and I hope I have the time that I get it in, in here. Our old building was so bad. You weren't here, Commissioner Gahan, and neither was Commissioner Chirmack. But our CFO had buckets up against every window in his office, collecting all the rainwater and the debris coming down the windows. The mold was so bad in our offices that you could barely breathe in there half the time. We had two elevators, and you took your life in your own hands getting on one of them at any specific time during the day. Thank God, we had somebody that bought that building and fixed it all because those costs were tremendous. We had other buildings that we paid for lights on the, for the city of Scranton. We had an elevator in some of these other buildings that, again, you took your life in your hand. We have four elevators here now that work.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to come back because I'm sorry, but this building was the best thing that ever happened to this county. We have all of our offices consolidated. We're no longer paying all those rents. I apologize, Commissioner. I just asked for a little bit of leeway because I'm so tired. I just asked for a little bit of leeway, because I'm so tired of hearing-
I know, but we'll be here-
-that this office is not, this building was not good.
We'll be here next week.
It was the best thing that happened to us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be here next week. Would anyone else like to address the board? Scott Thomas.
From the library. The library system did get a millage increase, not this last time, but the time before. I don't remember the exact amount. We don't carry deficits. We'd be in a position now if we did not have the millage increase of cleaning services that people depend on. So we, that's why that happened. We don't want to cut services, so I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Would anybody else like to address the board?
So I won't take up the whole five minutes, but I also wanted to speak on the fact that I don't feel Lackawanna County reassessment is being fair, equitable, or transparent. As Suzanne mentioned earlier, Schoolkill County is in the process of reassessment at approximately the same place as Lackawanna County is. And they confirmed that they're providing old valuation, old taxes, new valuation, and estimated new taxes. So I don't see why Lackawanna County cannot do the same thing. Again, I think that the reassessment should be made fair, transparent, and equitable, and that you should be providing the ratio to the public and also providing the estimated new tax. That would be helpful to every resident, not only in Lackawanna County, but particularly in the city I live in, which is Scranton. So, and then the only thing I did want to ask is, what is the average valuation ratio
We don't have that information yet. Our values are still not completed as of this point. We wouldn't have that information until all values have been set on Tyler's side, so our informal reviews have to be completed, which will not happen until the end of May.
Okay, so the information's not really available, then. And then, would you have the average valuation ratio increase in Scranton?
All informals have to be completed before we would even be able to give it, before we would even have an idea of what that information is. Informal reviews are scheduled, not necessarily by where anybody is, so I don't know if there's still informal reviews for Scranton residents or not.
Okay, so to the two commissioners that we have left, and we don't have a third one, I mean, I would ask you to try to come together, talk about it, and maybe try to make Lackawanna County as fair as some of the other counties, because every other county in Pennsylvania has this and we don't. And that makes it seem like something, there's something that you're trying to hide. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Chermak?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming in today and having our rep here from Tyler and having Patrick here. There's no doubt in my mind, there's no question in anybody's mind, this is a monumental task, what they're trying to do, a reassessment after 50-plus years. You know, they have to look at thousands and thousands and thousands of properties, whether they're residential, if they're just bare property, bare land, raw land, or commercial or industrial property. So it is a huge project. We are concerned about open and transparent, and I know many of the people that are getting their paperwork don't feel that it is very transparent. Some values that they're seeing of their properties, whether it's just basic land or a commercial property or whatever it is, they're looking at these numbers, and they're absolutely absurd to them. You know, we're trying to get this all jammed in here by the end of, well, in the next couple of weeks. You know, maybe we need to put the brakes on here a little bit and take a little more time. We have eight, as of yesterday, 8,000 requests for hearings. It's probably a lot more today. Maybe we need to look at that. As far as values, you know, I think in other counties, I know they have, they post these other values online, so people can look and make their own comparisons. You know, I have a stack of emails here, and I have a lot more upstairs. Property of North Abington Township, their comparisons were Montage Mountain, so Glenmara, and the other one was Waverly. Well, they are not the same areas. So to me, that is not an accurate comparison. It could be in the house, it could be in the square footage, but it's a different school district, it's a different municipalities, it's a different value. So to me, that is not correct. So, you know, I think we need to maybe look at that and give more time for Tyler to have hearings, and 15 minutes is, I don't know, I couldn't do mine in 15 minutes, so, you know, that's, to me, that's not enough time. You know, I have one here that sticks out. They got their, the parents got their new assessment or new appraisal, and now they're, again, they're confused, they're concerned, they don't know, there's too many unknowns. And the part that got me was their 14-year-old son offered to go get a job to help them pay for their property taxes, so, you know, that's not what I want to hear. So I think there's a better way we can put people at ease. I think we need to take a little more time. And the other thing, and my position's never changed on this. You know, we implemented this during the middle of a pandemic, which I thought was insane, but it happened. I think that we need to take a look at what we're doing, make sure these numbers are correct, make sure that everybody is on the same page, instead of just jamming this down people's throats and initiating it. The other issue that I have, and that's very concerning to me, is we have no safeguards in place. You know, we have folks that survive on $11,000, $12,000 a year on their social security, and they're living in their houses. That covers their taxes, that covers their food, that covers their light bill. If we raise their taxes a penny, they're in trouble. So we don't have safeguards. You know, there's ways to do it. Other counties do it, other states do it. There's gradual phase-ins, there's, you can freeze assessments. I mean, there's lots of things that we can do. I think these all have to be put in place before this is initiated. So other things we need to look at? Absolutely. Somebody mentioned about different ways to pay for government and for schools. You know, I've been a huge advocate for raising sales tax and eliminating property tax. Let everybody pay, whether you're traveling through the county or the state. You know, you're all, everybody's pitching in. If you're the person living in your house, you're elderly, and you don't buy a lot of things, you're not paying much. But if you're out buying a new vehicle, or you're doing this or doing that, you're going to pay a little more in taxes, which is nominal. So there are other ways. I've been really hammering away at our legislators to, you know, hopefully that Pennsylvania could look at that. We're a Class III county, there's 11 of us. Maybe the Class III county can get a waiver to increase a proper, a sales tax, so we can apply it to lowering property tax. So there's things that can be done. I have a lot of concerns. I want to make sure this is done correctly. I want to make sure these figures are correct and that everybody wants, we're ready to pull this lever, everybody's in agreement that they're okay with it. And there's, you know, as we move a little further, I think we should be able to definitely give people an idea of what their taxes are going to be. That's everyone's main concern. It's very confusing to try to figure out. We know it's supposed to be revenue neutral within 10%, but nobody knows. I don't even know what my taxes are going to be. And believe me, I don't need my taxes to go up either. You know, my family business. I don't even want to know what their appraisal was just given to them. I have no idea what it is. I'm afraid to even see it. But I think we need to take a long, hard look at what we're doing, slow the process, make sure everything is correct, and move forward from there. You know, it's like locking the barn door after the horse got away. I think we need to do it before and make sure we have safeguards, make sure everybody's on the same page. So I hope that makes sense to people. I hope they appreciate that, you know, I am trying to do some of these things, and, you know, let's, hopefully we can move forward and this goes smoothly. And again, it's a monumental task what Tyler's trying to do. This has been a long time coming. There's nobody, I don't think there's anybody in this room doesn't agree that we have to do a reassessment, but it's got to be done correctly, it's got to be fair for everyone. So I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. I'll just spend a second on the reassessment. So Mr. Tobin and Ms. Edwards, in your opinion, is this, the reassessment being done correctly?
In my opinion, yes, it is.
So I would also like to reiterate that we've done valuation for Lackawanna County and all the work that we have looked at. We are within IAAO standards, which is the assessment law we have to abide by as evaluators within the state of Pennsylvania. So everything that we have done value-wise is within that, the IAAO standards. As far as, you know, valuation, lots of people have questions with the values that they have seen. I've been saying for the last year and a half now, and I don't get to reach as many people as I would hope, but I did state that when you go 58 years without a reassessment, your old value versus your new value, it's going to be sticker shock. The market has changed tremendously since 1968, and I think just about everyone in this room can agree. It's hard not to agree with that. The market changes, the real estate market changes, and typically it appreciates. Now, we send out these values, and those values essentially mean it's a starting point for, you know, where we're looking at for properties to see who's going to pay what portion of these taxes. Now, as we mentioned before, you know, it's set to be revenue neutral, the millage rates will be adjusted. I know it's a big concern for everyone. You know, Commissioner Chermak had mentioned that, you know, wanting to put out there what these estimated taxes would be. But I don't know of any projects. I mean, they're mentioning Schoolkill. Tyler doesn't, hasn't done the Schoolkill project. It's a different reassessment that handles that. But, I mean, to answer your question, Commissioner McGloin, I do believe that we're, this is exactly how it should be going. We have these processes and procedures in place. We've been reiterating with everybody, you know, follow the process. You know, we go from data collection, we're talking to the property owners at the house. If we weren't able to make contact there, you have the data mailer. If you weren't able to get a data mailer because it was a vacant lot, or you weren't able to speak to us over the phone, we have the informal reviews. We ask for the property owner to engage with us and walk through the process with us, because at the end of the day, a property owner is, you're the one who knows your property best. But yeah, it's, we're going through the process, and this is exactly how we expect it to be on this project and every project.
And is there any correlation between the new valuations that people received and their, what their millage rate would be? You've answered this before, I just want to reiterate. So when you get your new valuation, can you glean anything on what your new tax rate will be?
There is not. And there's no correlation between your old value versus your new value either.
Right. The other, and I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Chermak on the statement that he just made to put the brakes on or to pump the brakes. Attorney Price, can you speak to the order that was issued by the judges, I believe it was a few years ago, in terms of the reassessment? And can you just explain that? And I think that will answer the question on whether or not we can put, pump the brakes on this.
Yes, there was a lawsuit that was filed by Lackawanna County residents in 2018. A stipulated order was filed and signed by a three-judge panel of Lackawanna County in 2022, directing that the Lackawanna County full and complete reassessment shall be completed by January 1st, 2026. To not comply with the court order, any parties to that lawsuit can move to enforce the stipulated order, as the court retains jurisdiction, so.
Okay, thank you. So, look, I understand that there's questions. I understand that there's concern about reassessment, but the facts are that it has to be done. We were ordered by a court to do it, and at this point, to try to pump the brakes, we've, I don't, Mr. Tobin, can we pump the brakes on this? I mean, you're on a tight timeline to get this done, correct?
That's correct. It needs to be done by January 1st of 2026.
Right.
And just to reiterate a point that Samantha was making earlier. In New York State, our neighbors to the north, they reassess property every single year. In Maryland, our neighbors to the south, they reassess properties every three years. Reassessment is something that happens all over this country every year, and it does seem dramatic to the people of Lackawanna County, because for 57 years, we didn't have a reassessment. That's why a lot of people are feeling the sticker shock from their previous assessment to their new market value. One thing has nothing to do with the other. One thing has nothing to do with the other.
Okay, thank you. Just to end on this note, as everyone has said here ad nauseam, last time we had a reassessment was 1968. It's more than half a century of unfairness that's baked into our system, where some pay way more than they should, while others pay far less than they should. So reassessment isn't just necessary. Attorney Price pointed out, we don't have a choice to do this. It doesn't matter, if I wasn't here, Commissioner Chermak, or whoever, it doesn't matter who the commissioners are. This reassessment was coming no matter what, no matter what questions were asked, or no matter who's here, Republican, Democrat, Independent, Green Party, doesn't matter. A reassessment is, it's about restoring fairness, equity, and trust. And if you do have questions about it, the gentleman sitting in front of me here, Mr. Tobin, has literally gone to the greatest lengths I've seen, and I've been in government for over 10 years now in public service, to answer every question, to return every phone call, and to give the facts, along with Samantha Edwards and all the representatives from Tyler. So we are being transparent, we are telling the truth, and we're trying to do this the right way and to do it the fair way. Will there be questions? Obviously. Will there be disagreements? Yes. And if you don't agree with your valuation, that's where the informal appeal comes in. If you don't agree with that, you have another avenue to appeal it later on this summer, and we'll have more information on that. So there are, there are questions, but there are answers to those questions as well. In terms of safeguards, nobody wants to see anybody lose their home. I mean, I didn't get involved in public service to see anyone lose their home. Barb Lenity at the Tax Claim Bureau literally works with people almost daily to ensure that they, either they get on a payment plan, or there's other mechanisms to make sure that no one loses their home. So I don't want to scare people. We will make sure that you do not lose your home. All you have to do is come in here and call us and come to us, and we will absolutely work with you, and that's been done for decades now. One other thing I want to speak about for, quickly, there's a young man named Eddie Kaufman, who is a Mid Valley High School alumni and a Roanoke University sophomore, and he is currently in search of a blood stem cell donor to treat his T-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia, which is a form of cancer that affects blood, tissue, and bone marrow. To that end, Team Dyak will be in the Government Center lobby this Friday, April 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the team will take an oral swab of anyone who's interested in being a donor for possible inclusion in the Blood Stem Cell Donor Registry. Several county employees, we've come to find out, are related to this gentleman, Eddie, but they're outside the acceptable range of, to be a potential donor. The acceptable range is 18 to 40. So we're sending this message out to all county employees. Anyone in the public who can stop by this Friday and would like to be swabbed to see if you would be a match, we are asking people to help us here. This young gentleman and his family are going through hell right now, and if I know anything about this community in this county, everybody steps up to help out. So there's been a ton of people who have come forward already to be swabbed to try to help him, but anyone in the audience today, anyone who might be watching on ECTV, any county employees, Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., come and get swabbed. And that's all. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second on the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.